Good evening, everybody. Please join us in doing the President Allegiance. Thank you. You're going to please take your role.
Councilmember Sherbrink.
Eric.
Councilmember Gray.
Eric.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember Dietrich.
Here.
Councilmember Poynar.
Here.
Okay, everybody's here tonight. First thing, we always like to start a meeting off with something good, and tonight we're going to acknowledge some good Samaritans who did a very kind act of emergency. Thanks for a young man back in May, I think it was May, wasn't that correct? Hunter Goodman. We're so happy you are here with us tonight. You had quite an adventure this summer. And anyway, so we'd like to acknowledge those three people who came to your aid right away that night, and I'm gonna let you be with us when we take a picture, okay? Would that be all right? And your parents, okay? All right, so first off tonight, I would like to acknowledge Josh Heffernan. If they come up here to the front, do you need to speak here for people to see or what's gonna be the answer to do this?
Yeah, right there.
All right, so we got Josh Heffernan, and then Melissa Hostile, and Heather Monson. And we'd like to present. We're still learning how to work with this new apparatus. Anyway, so the city of Manchester would like to present the Good Samaritan Award, and it's hereby presented to both, or to all, Josh Heffernan, Heather Monson, and Melissa Hostile. Your outstanding act of selflessness and kindness, your unwavering dedication to helping others in their time of need without seeking recognition or reward, exemplifies the true spirit of compassion and humanity. Through your courageous actions and generous heart, you have made a lasting impact on the lives of those you have touched, specifically Hunter Goodman. Your actions inspire all of us to be better, kinder, and more caring individuals. Thank you for your remarkable contributions and the values that define a Good Samaritan. And so I would like to congratulate you all on that. I think that that means Heather, and Melissa, and Josh. So I might get Hunter up here as well, and then Josh, if you want, or Joe, if you want to go up because your sister's one of these people. Over here.
Which one?
Right here in the middle? So we should have, why don't we have you three in the middle? Joe and I'll stand behind you, and Hunter, you get right here with them, and you'll stand right there.
Yeah.
Because this is more, okay, can you get all of us this way?
I can, yeah.
This is perfect.
Raise the certificates up so we can see you. There, you guys ready? No flash photography on my part, but I can't speak for anybody else.
Okay, then I'm gonna ask for one more picture just because I think this is appropriate. Hunter's parents, do you want to come up here, and Joe and I sit down, okay? Thank you so much.
I need you to stay here for just a moment, and I'm gonna introduce Mandy Bieber.
She's our EMA, Emergency Manager.
Thank you. So about a year ago, we started a program where we wanted to honor our first responders for any acts that they did that were above and beyond the regular call of duty. And it is all based on nominations from their peers. And so after this event, I received a nomination from Matt Weiser, and it is my honor to present firefighter Joshua Heffernan with the Delaware County Life Saving Award.
All right, thank you so much, everybody. Congratulations. Okay, next, we're gonna have our public input period. Please come to the podium that we're going to put back. Yeah? Oh, yes, sorry. I, thank you for telling me that, Bill. Next, we need approval of the agenda. Are there any changes or anything that we need to do now?
I don't have any changes.
Okay. Anybody else have anything? Okay, with that, I seek a motion in a second to approve the agenda. I shall approve.
No, certainly.
Okay. Any questions? Linda, yes? Ryan?
Yep.
Bill?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And Marion?
Yes.
All right, now we'll go into the public input period. Please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record before proceeding with your comments. Individual remarks are limited to five minutes, and we have an overall 30-minute period for public input. Under Iowa Obermeetings Law, the city can take no formal action on comments given during the public input period which do not relate to action items on the agenda. Is there anyone that would like to speak to the council tonight?
Well, I really wasn't planning on speaking, but since my son-in-law has yet made it, I just have a question.
Can you state your name and your name and address?
Jackie Sherman. I live at 308 South Wayne Street in Manchester. I am referring to six points since the review of the proposed ordinance regarding the noise control. And after reading the information with the change in the code, I just didn't think it was sped up significantly to address overall concerns that I had. So if a restaurant has open music, or if somebody is having a gathering with some music, or if the pumpkin farm, Sherman Pumpkin Farm, if we are having an open to the public movie night, it wasn't, I didn't feel that it was open enough to allow for some of those functions to take place. So I just, I like clearer, clearer explanation as far as as to what if permits are gonna be needed. This coming Saturday, we're gonna be having an open to the community night where salt community company from Cedar Rapids is coming to do a spiritual night that's open to all the churches and open to the public, and so there will be singing and some slide shows. And so I'm concerned as to what kind of restrictions are put, are being put on this with ordinance with the menu of the noise control.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Anybody else like to talk to the counselor? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public input, and we will go on to the consent agenda. Our first item is, oh, sorry, there, my things, okay. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the September 30th city council meeting and October 7th committee as a whole meeting. I need a motion to adopt Resolution 104 approving the bills and the expense approval report. Next is a motion to acknowledge the receipt of our wastewater treatment report. Need a motion to approve the liquor licenses for the American Legion, pork and bottle, and Easy Pickens. Next, I need a motion to adopt Resolution 99 approving amending the employee handbook, and this is in regard to Section 21.19 Smoking, Bathing, and Tobacco Use. Next, I need a motion to, is that a first reading or not?
Resolution's just required.
Just, okay, that's right, okay. Next, I need a motion to adopt Resolution 105, and that's amending salaries for a part-time office person and at the city office and a children's librarian who has reached her new step increase. I need a motion to approve the payment per gram for the 2024 street improvement project in the amount of $15,865,075. I need a motion to acknowledge the receipt of unpaid nuisance mowing fees and approving certification to the Delaware County Treasurer for collection on property taxes. Next, I also need a motion to approve the purchase of the 2024 Ford Maverick XLT truck for the building department from Run D Auto Group at a cost of $29,275. With that, I will take a motion a second, and then we can open it up for discussion.
I want approval of the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Any questions or comments? I had one on, just for, because is Easy Pickens now called Quick and Handy?
It is, but they still like some of those.
Hearing no other questions, Marion?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And Linda?
Yes.
We have no public hearings tonight, so next we have Delaware County Emergency Management update from Mandy Bieber.
So I'm your emergency management coordinator, in case you don't know who I am. I have kind of started a program where I meet with a different town once a month at their council meeting, just so that the council members also know who I am. All of the mayors serve on my commission, but I don't get to see the council members too often. And also, just to give you guys an update, so you know what we're working on. So I will go right into that update for you guys. So first off, I've been working heavily with the Community Foundation, the Foundation for the Future of Delaware County, and that is, they had a COVID committee, but they are now turning into a disaster committee, and so they're not exactly sure how that works or what their role is after disaster, or how those funds would be applied. So working with them to see how they work, and then also how do they interact with our already formed recovery committee. Working on school security training, so teaching response to active events to staff at Macocata Valley. I have one more to go with them, and then I'll be moving on to EDCO, and then I'm working with West Delaware to get their training scheduled. We have completed a reunification kit to assist schools in the process, so it's called a rock box. Basically, what it is, is it's everything we would need to reunify parents with their children, but also have a paper trail for it. So it involves card stock, tears in half, parents have all their information on one half, information on the other half, both parties sign up on both halves, so that the school has a record and the parents have a record. And then it also has the whole process of how this is going to work, how it looks. And then we created a workbook for the schools to plan out what their reunification team looks like. We did receive grant funding to roll out standardized response, and I'm working with the schools to get that ready for next year, so that right now, with all three schools, all three emergency plans are different. So if dispatch calls West Delaware and says you need to lock down, it means something different than if they call EDCO and tell them to lock down, or they call Macocata Valley and tell them to lock down. So what we're trying to do is get all three schools on board with the same protocol, so that there is, all of the responding officers know this is what, how they will respond. And then all of the schools know that if dispatch calls them and tells them they need to secure, or they need to lock down, or they need, you know, to evacuate, that this is what that means, and these are the steps you need to take. So basically getting everybody on the same page. We have our new building built at the sheriff's office, and it's so very, very close to complete, but we are waiting on the electrician, and we've been waiting a while. The building went up really, really fast, but the electrician has been really, really slow. Once that is complete, we'll be able to reallocate our flood fight, I'm sorry, flood fight supplies to Manchester. So we recently procured HESCO barriers and super sacks in addition to the regular sandbags that we keep on hand, and those will be staged here in Manchester. There's no water currently. We went from drought to out of drought to back into drought, like all in a matter of a few months. The current forecasts that I have seen for winter are only about two to four feet of snow for the whole winter. So we could be looking come spring at further drought condition. Recently attended the Homeland Security Conference, and that focused a lot on water. Either some communities had too much, like Sioux Falls, where their wells were contaminated by floodwater, or there was not enough water, so I attended a session on Osceola, that is a single soreth water town, and they had, they were down to 290 days worth of water, and so they were trying to figure out how they were going to. And all of the solutions were in the millions of dollars, so they were really happy. The only solution that they came up with was that it rained. So bringing all of that information back, I'm going to be putting together a workshop for water utilities to kind of walk through what their emergency plans are. The town of Minden, their entire water treatment plant was blown over by a tornado, so talking with them about like, what are our plans? If your whole water treatment system is destroyed, what are we gonna do to get water back to the people? Working on our required plans for this year, so transportation is almost complete, then we'll be moving on to public works, logistics, hazmat, and then infrastructure recovery. I have sent out emails to the clerks and mayors all over the county that there is hazard mitigation funding available. So money comes in from the state from disasters, but a portion of that money has to be spent on mitigation projects, and it's open to everybody across the state. So whatever money Greenfield receives, a certain percentage of that is set aside for everyone to make their communities more resilient. The one caveat is that it has to appear in the multi-J plan that we worked on putting together, which all of the projects so far that I've discussed with communities have fallen within that plan, so. Our crisis canine program is moving along, so usually I would have a little yellow dog with me. She is away at boot camp, but I do have her trading cards here for you guys. We're gonna pass those around. Last September, well, this past September, I completed the basic peer support training, and I attended both with several local responders and then also several EMAs. So we are working on forming a local peer support team and then also a state EMA team. So working on both fronts for that. And then Mabel has already had a huge impact for our PR. Just today, I ran into Reese Talk at Public Health, and she looked at me, and she's like, where's your dog at? She's at school right now. And then with several individuals, even though we cannot be officially deployed yet, my personal favorite was a comment I received that said, "Thank you for bringing Mabel to the meeting today. She brought me peace." So that was just kind of a good feeling there. Current weather, we're under a frost advisory for Tuesday and a freeze warning for Wednesday, so cover any plants you want to keep and make sure that hoses and other outdoor water sources are drained and shut off. And that is all I have, so.
Thank you so much for the update. That, I'm gonna head out, because I got Mason Bell tonight, too, so thank you, guys. Next, we have data regarding the speed trailer that was put up on Winslow Drive, and we have information to share with everybody.
Yeah, so basically, as what I've stated in the agenda packet, you know, we did take a look at random machine up there for eleven days, and it's a speed camera or radar reminder of what your speed is. It does collect data as far as number of vehicles, time of day, so we have information that we can make decisions off of. Eleven days it was up there was 1,438 vehicles passed by that camera, so where it was set up, that camera radar sign, was on east side of Winslow Drive, facing the west, so eastbound traffic coming into subdivision. And so for 11 days, that's what that was capturing, was the vehicles coming into subdivision. Of that, 88% of them were following the speed on the 25 mile an hour or below. We had 149 that were driving between 26 to 30 miles an hour, with 18 that were traveling in excess of 31 miles an hour. Majority of them were between 31 and 39 miles an hour. Those 18, there was one that looked like it was over 80 miles an hour. I'm not sure if that was English, or if there was actually someone driving that fast, and if they were, they had pretty good performance vehicle, so. So what the data, what we're seeing here is, yes, there are occasions where maybe people are speeding through there. The numbers show that the majority of people who do drive back there are driving the speed limit. So it's not above the speed limit. You know, DOT does their speed studies on West Main Street, when they went through that to see if they could ever use the speed, and they said, 80% of the traffic is traveling above that speed limit or at this speed limit, you can't reduce it. So there's some comfort level there. I do think, you know, again, it's a residential neighborhood, there are non-sidewalks there. They do have to share the street with Australians and bicyclists up there. The council can take whatever action it likes. The MUTC does not require us to put any sort of signalization there, because there's not enough traffic going through that intersection to require traffic control. But there is a stop sign that's been there for 20-plus years for traveling, traveling westbound on Winslow Drive. It's related to the council, how you would like to proceed with that intersection.
So is tonight a discussion, or?
Discussion, because if we are going to change something, we have to generate a resolution to approve that change for the next meeting.
Back in about 1985, on West Aker Street and North Third, terrible, terrible car accident, truck accident. And I know shortly after that, they put up a four-way stop there, which has been there forever for this council. And it has seemed to help slow people down. So I myself personally, much as letters we have gotten from people in the area, I don't see a problem with a three-way stop sign. I mean, that stops everybody from both directions. They're gonna see traffic, they're gonna see kids playing in the area. I'm in favor of a three-way stop. If the community up that way, you know, residents up that way feel that way, that's kind of the way I would feel.
Any else having?
That was my thoughts, too. When I went up there, right after our meeting, I went up there and talked to a couple of people, and you know, if you get, if your neighborhood wants a, wants a stop sign, I think we can put in a stop sign, you know, the three-way. You know, because right now it's from the, coming into the north, right?
Yeah.
So now we would do east-west.
East, well, right now it's only westbound and west.
It's a west, west.
There is that one Crescent Drive coming into that intersection.
So then we'd make it a three-way.
Just turn into a three-way?
Yeah. Because if that's what the neighborhood wants, I would, you know, be in favor of doing that.
Okay.
Even though the, kind of the data does.
Mr. We, the MUTC code, is there to provide us something to base things off of, but the council has the ultimate decision here?
It's a guideline, yeah.
My only concern is not having the sidewalks, so the kids have to be in the street. If there were sidewalks, I'd probably say no, but without there being sidewalks, I would be in favor of doing the three-way.
I don't have a problem with the three-way, because it's not an area that a lot of people drive unless they live there. If we were talking about on North Franklin, you know, or something like that, where you've got people using it as a thoroughfare, then I think we have a bigger problem. So I don't have a problem with a three-way stop if that's what they really feel they need. Personally, I'm not sure you need it, but, but I don't live there, so that's, so, you know, if that's what you guys think you want, I don't have a problem with giving it to you. I'm not sure that the data really supports the need, but obviously, you feel there's a need, so I don't support you in the need.
Joe, or Linda?
I agree with three-way stop. I think we have a lot safer for the kids out there, no sidewalk.
The community, the community up there supports the three-way stop, so that you guys' neighborhood, I mean, if that's what you guys want to try and make your neighborhood safer, I'm all for it.
You're the one that's gonna have to stop, so.
Okay, we'll just bring back the resolution at the next meeting, approving a three-way stop, and then we'll have the stop sign installed.
And I just want to clarify again that the trailer that we used to do this speed thing is city-owned, so there were no additional city funds spent to.
We acquired that 11 years ago, and that was part of our STEP program, special traffic enforcement program, to cover those funds.
All right. Next, I need a motion to adopt Resolution 106, and that's to amend the officer reimbursement agreement with Police Officer Nicholas Petelski. Did I say that right? All right, reducing the reimbursement period from five years to two years. He comes to us with three years of experience from Manona Police Department, with a buyout cost in the city at $54.36 to $96. And you want to speak to the? Oh, we got to end it? Okay.
Yeah, so it's just a mistake on my end that I didn't check. Generally, whenever a higher certificate happens, I like to take into account their experience and what that buyout is. Speaking with them, what we'd like to look at in the future is maybe like a cap number, so that we can reduce it down and be a little bit more fair and help attract more certified candidates. Just with that buyout, you know, like I put in the email, that's a thousand dollars a year, really, at the end of the day. And buying your contracts doesn't really even make much of a difference, a thousand dollars a year for him or for us. So just reducing it down to two would be more fair for them.
Well, I would entertain a motion in a second.
I'm not motion to approve, this one, three.
I'll second.
All right, any further questions or chief Davis or comments? Okay, Joe?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
And Marion?
Yes.
Okay. Next, I need a motion to approve payment to top-grade excavating. This is pay estimate number seven, and the amount of $1,220 for the 2024 East Main Street Improvement Project, and that covers work from September 1 through September 28. Anything you want to add to that?
See, I'm gonna speak to, honestly, this is DOT thing, otherwise, I'm not sure whether we're gonna pay us plus $10,000 to the city.
Okay.
So yeah, so this is just to say the last partial pay estimate for the reseating work that was done. And then one safety closure. So like I say, this is semifinal pay estimate, so this will be the last partial pay estimate, if you will. The next one should be final, and then just paying the retainage out, so that's really, this should be the last of the items, other than plan rate, paintage, come at the end. So product bid was a little over $1.3 million. Currently, the product's sitting at $1.26 million, so it did come, come under the overall bid amount by about $83,000. Overestimated some of the paving, sewer and water services, and that's all, not knowing what exactly was out there, so some of those quantities were a lot less than what we had estimated. And then save some quantity on excavation and some of the three-inch macadam, because there was areas between Anderson and East Main, and then east of Anderson Street that we didn't excavate down all the way, that it feels necessary. So we just didn't go quite as deep, but all held up pretty good. We did a similar thing on the last phase a couple of years ago. Say, everything held up pretty good, and with the sandy soils, it all worked out pretty good, and it hardened up really well, even after sitting for a week with just rock on it, it actually got pretty stiff. So, see, that's just paying the last of the items, and then after, after this, it's just the final retainage, so all that's, all that's left until you get done with all those items.
So how far are we from having assessments and that information ready for the council?
Yep, so close. Yeah, we just go go through final items, and then we'll get something, probably get a draft sent to Tim and Aaron to look through, just to make sure that we're confirming what, what you guys wanted, and then we'll get that in front of us, so that can be.
I make a motion to approve payment.
Any further questions? Bill?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Marion?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And Brian?
Yes.
Next, I need a motion to approve a pay estimate number two, the Chick Cry Escavating, and the amount of $99,241.22 were completed on the Commerce Court Street Extension Project. And that's for work from August 28 through September 28. You want me to speak to this? You're gonna let Jason do that one, okay?
So this is the progress pay application for the project, basically all the remainder of the underground work, that it wasn't in the first pay application, plus the subgrade preparation of the rock placement. At this point, we're looking for them to start paving on Friday of this week, is the last I've heard. So the concrete will start being placed at the end of this week. So this is just a partial, I'd imagine, that we'll have, you know, by this time next month, all the work should be complete out there. We should be getting, probably be able to finalize the quantity, so get ready to close that project out as well.
I move for approval.
I'll second it.
Any further questions? Marion?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Brian?
Yeah.
And Linda?
Yes.
All right. Next, uh, for discussion, uh, we're reviewing the current noise ordinance. It was noticed that it didn't adequately address the noises generated by means other than vehicles. So um, do you want to go ahead and cover this again? Tim?
Yep, and it's on you. You have a draft resolution or ordinance, excuse me, in your packet there. I do think it addresses uh activities that are determined by the council to be acceptable by the community. Uh, if you look at their forty-eight points or three exemptions. Noise, any noise resulting from activities of temporary duration are generally acceptable to the people of the committee. From the law and for which a license or permit has been granted by the city, Manchester including but not limited to parades, sporting events and fireworks displays. If we're wanting to get down to businesses and stuff like that. I, I don't know the. It depends on how the council wants to perceive it, but I guess i- if you wanna require permitted for anticipating the noise will affect a different range, about uh, you'll pass a certain hour.
Yeah, because it does allow for events um.
Yeah.
Outdoor music or amplified noise from, you know, just have to end at midnight. So. And I think that's most, most of our bars are.
Yeah, because I asked that same question because I know Riverbend has music out near death later hours and it gets residential area behind them too.
I really don't want to get into having to give a permit every time somebody wants to sing. So um. I, I think personally it's covered here.
Okay.
Because I think that when it says you can do it until midnight. Um, I don't see a problem with the checking. I really think that, that you're covered and I don't see you doing overnight things that are gonna last forever. So.
So it's saying that we wouldn't have to require permits for things like parades and outdoor events?
That's correct. Well, we typically have a permit if they're gonna do a parade and we require a permit for fireworks. If you're closing off the street uh for an event uh like River Days. Uh, that's permitted because it's come through the council because we're authorizing those activities.
The one thing I saw is this distance of fifty or more feet for some of these things. The current ordinance is two hundred feet, three hundred feet on some of those uh the um vehicles. Because I mean, if you did fifty feet for vehicles or anything going down, you'd be trying to arrest everybody. I, I think that might be more in line with the old one as far as like.
Two hundred feet?
I mean, yeah, if you can, I mean, if you can hear it. Yeah.
Of two hundred feet.
I mean, you expect to hear some noise when you're outside, but when you're inside your house, if you can hear it inside your, your house and some, depending on how far your house is from the street, I guess, but I don't know. That's something I think fifty feet is too close.
Well, for perspective.
Per perspective.
Well, people, city blocks are average blocks about three hundred feet wide.
Yeah.
So that gives you some perspective about the distances of what you're looking at. Uh, and so, you know, three hundred feet is, is a city block, three hundred feet is, oh, one hundred fifty would be halfway through there. So if someone's learning music, you can hear it half block away. Is that uh the distance where you think it's the longer acceptable?
So we would be going, we're gonna stay with the three hundred feet?
Well, I'm, I'm just saying, I don't know, somewhere between there, I guess.
Well, I was, when I was reading it too, I was thinking about fifty feet. So my front lot is, I think, fifty-five. So if I can hear it from the street to the property limit, then it's too loud. That, to me, it just.
Yeah, you'd be arresting everybody.
Right.
You know.
Yeah, I did. I just, I think fifty feet's too restrictive um as far as the footage. The other concern that I had was on uh forty oh, forty-eight point zero two, item number eight. So the street creation of the um noise working on motor vehicle. That's allowed between seven and nine. And I was kind of thinking about striking that last part, but only in a manner that is acceptable to somebody reasonably acceptable. The reason I bring that up is, is anybody that's into any type of power sports or a sports car or racing or any of that kind of stuff, if you gotta jet an engine on a dirt bike per se, it takes time. So if my neighbor gets a little grumpy, but it's at noon. I think, I mean.
Well, that would take it through him.
Right, but it. But it says only, only in such a manner that is reasonable person. So if a reasonable person is my neighbor that does not know what it's like to have to work on an engine to get it tuned correctly. Then now I'm getting called in. I think that if we're in that hour, it'd be no different than the neighbor having music playing or, you know, or the bar going with their downtown events.
That a reasonable person would not agree with.
Right.
Right.
I mean, there's some nights like I can hear the music down at River, from Riverbend at miles. I really don't care because it's, it's a business trying to make money, bringing young people to the establishment. So I just kind of, it don't bother me, but that doesn't say that my neighbors aren't bothered. But that's why.
I'm confused. What, what do you want to do with number eight?
I want to strike that last part after the, the timeframe. Only in, in such a manner reasonable person or normal sensitivities residing, or yeah, sensitivities residing in the area will not cause discomfort.
So you're just saying leave the hours, but don't worry if it's a reasonable person.
The reason I say.
Why that, you know, because to me, what's gonna happen is if somebody complains, they're gonna call and talk to Ben.
Right.
And Ben comes, and I think Ben then becomes the reasonable person who decides if they're at, you know what I mean? I don't think it's gonna be that because your neighbor complains, they're necessarily going to get a ticket.
Right.
I think that the ticket would come from the reasonable person who comes to see what's going on.
Right.
And so I'm assuming that the reasonable person was the police officer or, you know, you understand what I mean?
Yeah, I got you.
So that was why, how I read was that, that Ben is looking at it as, okay, it might be a little loud, but I think most people can handle it. Does that, is that how you look at it?
And we're judged by that same standard and most of the part about the objective reasonable standard anyway. So that's within like non, like civil mentally criminal issue. It's about being reasonable. So if we look at a, you know, scenario and the, we still have to meet that criteria.
Right.
A normal person like for us being judged by another officer, do the same thing in the same scenario.
Right.
To, to me, it'd be the same as, did someone stop at a stop sign along? You know, a, a reasonable person. You know, your, your decision. That is how I read it, Joe. That's why I wasn't sure why I had to take it out. Do you understand?
Right, yeah.
Coming from?
Yep, I got you a hundred percent. Just when I was reading, it was just something I wanted to discuss while we were all together.
Makes sense.
Okay.
You know, just, in my scenario, the way I kind of look at it is, is I know there's also some people in the neighborhood that might run demo cars or something like that. If he's trying to get that tune, so it's running right, the neighbor next door is like, that's not cool. If the cop stops by.
Yeah, again, we, we run into this situation again. Kids yelling outside, dogs barking, loud music.
Yeah.
It's, is it continuous and constant?
Right.
Is it something that is going to upset the neighborhood? Or is it something that's happened because they're tuning it for an hour?
Right.
Uh, once, one time out of the week.
Right. Now, again, I was figuring that was the kind of the same thing with the exhaust portion of it that's in here. Uh, motorcycles are supposed to be loud. You know, it brings awareness and saves lives. So just that kind of thing too. But there is a point where it is too loud, I agree. But.
Okay, so distance, we're still talking.
Yeah.
Yeah, what, what, what would you actually say?
Yeah.
The only was two hundred feet, yes, I'd have to.
One of them was two hundred, two hundred feet for like, yeah. CD players and cassette, which I thought was hilarious. Yeah. Um, for that, but then um, motor vehicles, I think was three hundred feet.
It'd be nice to have it consistent, I think.
Yeah, I agree.
And I, not only with the footage, but also the time. So I kind of had jotted down some notes in here. Why does the construction guy get to start at seven AM? Which I'm glad he can, because I've been in that scenario before, but then your music can't start till nine.
Nine?
Cause he's making, yeah, he's making up.
It's a business.
Business, yeah.
He's worried about ban when they practice early in the morning.
That's bound to be accepted, acceptable.
All the exceptions, okay.
Should we do it instead of by distance of a hundred feet or whatever? Should we do it by half a block? Because I gotta tell you, I'm not good at figuring out what fifty feet is, how to run. But, but I can tell you if I'm half a block from it. So would that make more sense? I know all blocks aren't the same. That's what you're gonna say. But, but it's hard to identify fifty feet.
It'd be a lot harder to enforce half a block. You'd have to go up, say, half a block, what was the measurement of this block?
Yes.
How far was it?
Yeah, I understand. I'm just thinking for myself of trying.
Where I have an officer, I heard from two hundred feet, he can estimate it two hundred feet.
So what are your other communities doing? Do you know?
I'm sorry.
You have any idea what some of your other communities do off the top of your head? Okay.
Uh, Galena, for example, went through a period where they tried to regulate hours and volume and indoor and outdoor. And they caused an enormous amount of problems for their businesses. And I didn't remember dealing with, there's people over there. One of the things you, I considered thinking about, you know, you have the hours uh for restaurants where they can't, or bars from certain hours. Nine o'clock until the next morning. Do you want to have some hours where they are allowed to do it subject to some volume restrictions or, or how far away? Because you're gonna be able to hear a band down the river, if they're a river band, that river valley is gonna be.
Carries amplifies it.
It's just gonna carry all the way down. Just like in Independence, the races. We hear them, I live two miles out of town, I hear them very clearly. Do you want to have some time limit where there, where restaurants and bars would be within reason exempt from being enforced, or where they have, was this reasonable or not?
Yeah.
Weekends or?
Yeah.
Yeah, for you.
I'm just, I don't know what, what it would be for you. Most my town, I had one town tried to do decimal me, decibel meters. That's awful.
How many decibel meters does Manchester Police Department own?
Zero.
You can put them on your phone now. But that, that, you know, you can wait till somebody revs their engine up just one time and catch it and get the one loud one.
Back in my younger days, I did make it very hard for the police department to find me. When you got loud pipes and you like to hear them, the cops know where you are.
Yeah.
So.
I mean, that's what I think. I, I'm just thinking of the businesses that you don't want to unintentionally make them afraid to do their regular business. That where you might want to give a little more guidance.
Yeah, because bowing, bowing tires, they, you know, they start zipping off uh tires and lug nuts. Uh, that's loud. I hear it in my bedroom and uh, or I go out, start my skid loader. My neighbor's here right next door. You know, I tend to start at seven or beyond and uh, you know, they expected I'm cutting metal out there. It's loud, skill saws are loud.
But something to the extent that says before seven, we don't expect that. Our, our tolerance would be less between these hours.
Between them hours, yeah.
Mm-hmm. Because I think people naturally do have less tolerance at six in the morning for that. Now, with that said, I looked at a lot of ordinances, so I'm using, there's no really good ones because it's all judgment call. Like I say, when Melina tried to be strict across, that really was, that, I think that was far worse than what we got now.
And the Jake breaking is always a fun thing to deal with as well. And unfortunately, when it happens, there's not always a police officer present to see it. So.
So should we make some revisions?
Felt like it's pretty good.
Yeah.
I mean, what's here, uh, if you want to extend the distance, I'm, I'm good with that. But, you know, if you're giving people until midnight. And that type of thing. And I don't see us being really unreasonable about these things. I mean, if, if it went until twelve fifteen, nobody's gonna help out. You know what I mean?
What if you said that, not to interrupt, sorry, but what if you said during the week, Monday through Friday was this time and the weekends, it's this time for different things? Because, you know, people have to get up and go to work during the week. So some people work weekends though too. I know.
It stays during the day.
True, yeah. Okay, I just talked myself out of that.
Happy, my first thought was it's a pretty good start and when you get it enforced, you're gonna find things you're gonna want to tweak.
And we can always tweak.
But I think it's a great, I, I thought it was, every time I thought I had a better answer, I started writing it down. It didn't really improve it a whole lot.
It's something down to like just feet.
What if we went to?
Hundred and fifty, hundred and fifty feet.
Hundred and fifty?
Hundred and fifty feet. That's about half a.
It's typically a standard half a block.
Okay, I, I could go with that. And I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, they'll start there and we can always tweak it every week.
Yeah. The times, the way they are, do we make all the times?
Well, I think the times are fine.
You know, like the music side of things, if they, farmers where they wanted to do some music one day, they can't start since nine. Right now, but allowing to start at seven.
Uh, again, is it? Are they louder than a lawnmower next door?
Yeah, see, I think if you had somebody down there, you're gonna have one person. You know, we tried to get groups to go down there and they, oh, so if it's too confusing, you're gonna have one person playing a guitar sitting down there. Nobody's gonna hear.
They don't pay them. I mean, it's just on tips, so.
So I, I, I think that's a, a non-starter, but um. I kind of like the hours that were, were here. I thought that they were reasonable hours for different things. And quite honestly, if I'm looking at it, I'm gonna be looking at certain hours for doing what I'm gonna be doing. And somebody else who owns a business is gonna be looking at different hours. I don't see that as a problem, you know? Um, I don't think they all have to coincide each other because I really don't want them playing music at seven o'clock in the morning down at Riverbend and you know what I mean?
They could always request a permission to, you know, there's gonna be like ride, ride, ride them through.
Well, we all accept that, yeah.
Yeah.
So go with it the way it is, go into a hundred and fifty feet thing.
I like that idea.
And then if someone wants to work outside of those hours, give them it.
Yeah, I'm good with one fifty. Um, one of the questions in there, and I don't want to throw it out, but you've got operating riding tractors, lawn mowers, which I'm not gonna mow grass at seven, it's too wet. But snow removal, some people do go a little bit.
If that's an emergency, and so there's an exception.
No, he's okay. All right, leave it. One fifty.
One fifty and then it ends up being an issue.
Okay.
Well, on agreement. Awesome. Okay. I'm gonna go ahead and move on to the next one then. Uh, we have discussion again. It's the draft proposed ordinance modifying chapter sixty-nine regarding parking regulations. Do you want to speak to this, Tim, before we start the discussion anymore?
Yeah, again, uh, really, our current ordinance doesn't address trailers or these uh stuff on the lines. It just addresses motor vehicles. So what this does is it gets a little further out there, it does address trailers and stuff. It addresses people parking their car out there for sale uh on the lot for more than twenty-four hours. You know, our city parking lots are open for twenty-four hours. So you park at a stall, whatever, we just should not be a car lot for anybody, but that's is what it is. Uh, and so we, we do address a few more things of what we, our current ordinance does. And as you can see in the comments here, uh, just trying to make sure the police department has a vehicle which they can use to enforce our laws and our expectations.
I mean, I can see it's just the time, like, uh, again, if you, if you were to park a camper or camper on the block, you're gonna clean it out, whatever. It's typically at, at least twenty-four hours to get it cleaned up. You know, um, I'm lucky, I can pull mine in the back, but if I had pulled it out in the street, it would probably sit there for at least three days. Uh, to worship, to clean it out, empty it, whatever. I mean, it's not petty, but it, it'd take a while to get stuff cleaned out.
And it's even worse when you load dirt bikes in the back of it.
Yeah. But you. For example?
For example.
But isn't it saying detached from a towing vehicle?
Yeah, if it's unconnected.
I mean, for the most part.
But that's because if the truck is connected, that's a motor vehicle that was regulated to, can't be parked there for more than twenty-four hours. Um, and I, I understand what you're saying, uh, but a lot of this is complaint basis.
Right.
Uh, we, we don't get a complaint till it's been there for a couple of days. Unless there's something going on, uh, we don't necessarily know when it's parked there. And we don't know if it's been moved. Unless the neighbor says that truck has been there for two weeks or the trailer's been there for a couple of days. I understand what you're saying, and, and the officers do tend to get a little bit lenient, say that that's part of what their purpose is as well. Unless it is causing an answer. In which case, then we, one way try to.
That would be my only question. A few areas I've seen, I don't guess I wanna call them car trailers, but that's kinda what I'm thinking of, or little flatbeds. You see those little parts parked along the streets, undetached, but no orange cone, no nothing behind, and that's. I don't know how you address that or.
I think we also need to add some of this stuff, especially since we were talking about speeding, we're talking about all this stuff. I think we need to do some public, um, education as well somehow, how we do it. Radio, morning things, I mean, commercials, whatever. I think we need to also be doing some public education.
Well, that comes into play with our Facebook posts and stuff like that.
And then when we put them in, in place, when you talk to KMCH and Tuesday morning, they very briefly cover it. They're showing where they can go to get the information. Yeah, I kinda have the same kind of thought as like Brian is on, on the camper side of things. Um, I'm in a unique position with building a garage right now, so I got a dump trailer sitting on the side of the road. That has materials in it to start working on doing some stuff, so it's gonna sit there for more than twenty-four hours, so like, in that situation. It's not a, it's not a. Contractors or businesses or whatever, it's my own personal stuff that's sitting there, so I. I know it's, it's gonna be complaint based. And but it's just one of those things where. There's just sometimes you can't move things within twenty-four hours. I don't like the twenty-four hour window at all.
Does this, does this basically like contractors, they're gonna park it?
Man, what's your interpretation?
So, like with the complaint life thing, you gotta remember too, a lot of times that, that number, you know, when we get to complain, we're gonna go over there. Very rarely are we gonna be like, oh, twenty-four hours, so here's your ticket. Having that complaint, going there and having, you know, particularly you being like, hey, I'm doing some construction, I can have it out of here, you know, three days. Right? That, and again, goes back to its whole objective, reasonable standard. Right? That's reasonable. As long as you're working with us, right? But having a twenty-four hours in the code, you know, that also protects us, because we go up and we have conversations, somebody tells me about Sam. Well, I'm not moving it, right? But then we can document when we went there and had that conversation, and it's not moved in twenty-four hours, right? But that's, that's part of that discretion. Right? So having that number is important when we need it. I think twenty-four hours is fair, but again, when we make that ultimate contact for those complaints, right? If we're making contact with the, you know, the alleged offender, right? If they're giving us some time that they can work with, then we can still monitor it. That's easy, right? We don't wanna write the tickets, we don't wanna go to the municipal court, we don't wanna have those charges sent out and, or do a hundred dollar civil citation in court, right? We wanna work with citizens just as much as everybody else. It's just in those rare instances where it is a problem, you know, the neighbor says it's been here for two weeks, right? And I tried to talk to him, that's why I called you. Well, that twenty-four hour kind of gives us the notice to go, okay, look. The neighbor said it's here for twenty-four hours, you need to work with us or you're kind of out of the car. Right? If you're not gonna give me a reasonable amount of time that you can fix the problem, then we have that twenty-four hours in there, but we can now kind of start to walk.
And I'm sure when you guys look at it like. My, my current situation with the dump trailer, and there's gonna be, you know, a trailer that might have a skid loader came on it, and it's sitting by itself. I'm on a dead end road, I'm working on a garage, and you guys will probably take that into consideration, I guess, and tell the neighbor like, hey, I'm sorry, but. It's getting more than twenty-four hours, given the circumstances.
Yeah, and then it kinda falls on us to continue to follow up. They give us a reasonable timeframe, that we seize to have them, we make contact, just, you know, get an update, try to smooth the sales.
Could we increase that to two days? Well, I mean, one day seems like forty-eight hours instead of twenty-four, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, really, you could do any timeframe. I'm just saying, having a definite timeframe does help us. Because it does, you know, does give that final, okay, well, this is what it needs to be done, it's like a reasonable kind of thing.
Are those kind of trailers and stuff like that covered for contractors when they do their building permit or not? Are they required to put some kind of cones and stuff around, they have to be in the street?
If it's street legal, it doesn't require to have cones around it. Uh, if you're in a dumpster, would you require cones around a dumpster to stick lead on it? Reflectivity on it.
And a couple of good contractors do actually put cones behind their trailers, which is nice. I guess I kinda like the twenty-four hour thing, just like Ben said. It might have been there for two days or three days previous before anybody even called. So, I mean, now if you give him two days, well, now it's five days. Cuz he goes out from checks on, so I guess it's the twenty-four hour thing that I would sooner still like to keep there, just because. It's gonna take a neighbor two or three days to report it anyway, so I just wouldn't go any further out than forty-eight hours. If you have something, that would be my suggestion.
Yeah, cuz like Bill's saying, if it's two days and they call, and by the time we get something, you know, it's five days in, the trailer's still been sitting there. You see that?
And the complaint falls on a different officer, my duty. I mean, you rotate officers out, so. It may not be the same person following up on.
Yeah, I, I don't know what the officers think about the whole situation, but I don't know that I would be all that angry that that's a problem. Letting you know that Billy had his trailer sitting there for the last forty-eight hours, just if you wanna look at that for me, you know what I mean? There's, there's gotta be other more important things to worry about, so I mean, I get, I guess. The twenty-four hour makes sense, but it, case by case, I mean, it's.
I would stick with the twenty-four and use a case by case. Because, again, I think it's reasonable. You know, I, I, I don't have things that I park in the road like that, but I have a neighbor who parks a. Huge boat in front of his house for five days at a time, sometimes, you know, so. Would I be thrilled if he had to move it to a new one? Yeah, yeah. So, to me, twenty-four hours is not a problem, because I think, again, it's a reasonable. I think, but that's just me.
So, I've got two that have said twenty-four hours.
I got.
I just, when it comes to the parking stuff, I just, I just know that. Personally, how it goes for me is if I take all the kids riding on Sunday, and I bring it home, and I got the impulse trailer sitting right by where I'm gonna wash them off at. It'll sit there, I go to work the next day, I come back. Well, there is no more ambition left in me that day, it's gonna sit. But it's, it's, it's secure and everything like that. I live on a dead end street. My neighbor don't, on that dead end road, don't complain about too much, but I try to think about it. If I was on Brewer Street. It'd be different. People would be, hey, why is this trailer sitting here? I might not have a place to park it, you know, and just. I'm just trying to relate to maybe somebody else's scenario with my setup, so to say.
That's why I like the forty, forty-eight hour window, just for the fact that you're giving a person the opportunity to get home from work, move, opportunity to move it. Um, or, or at least get wrapped up whatever he's doing.
The three hundred feet, I mean, you gotta throw a number in there, I get that. At three hundred feet, you're talking.
That's a block.
A block. About moving that trailer, they'd walk.
That's parked in front of somebody else's house. I think that causes issues, and I do think, it has to be moved more than six inches. So, so maybe it is a fifty foot radius.
Cause I've seen that happen on Brewer Street.
So, you know, maybe knock that three or down to fifty, so it's still at least in the same block or the city as the house.
Well, and if, and if it's gotta be moved, and you're talking fifty feet. You guys will be able to see that, I mean, plain and simple when you drive by it.
To provide a different address at that point. Or the opposite side of the street.
Or the side road coming.
Okay, so, I'm kinda hearing a split here on the twenty-four versus forty-eight hours, so which way do you want to go with that in feet? From moving the vehicle?
I'm going with forty-eight.
I'm like forty-eight and fifty feet, you know.
Oh yeah, Ben's fine with forty-eight, I'm fine with forty-eight. I just, twenty-four was.
Seemed enough, but.
Fifty feet?
I like fifty. Yep, I mean, what is a lot, minimum lot is fifty-five. Now you're in front of somebody else.
You're still gonna be in front of somebody else's unless you have a quarter lot or. Unfortunately, we, we can't generate a lot that fits every issue.
If you don't have the land to park yourself on, maybe. Slow down on buying. I mean, I have that problem, but I'm in a unique situation, so it, it just.
Okay, so, is that giving you some direction then? Okay. All right. Got one more to discuss, and that's the proposed ordinance amendment on subdivision regulations, reducing the requirements the property owner would. Need to go through the combined two adjacent lots into a large lot. Anyone speak to this again, Tim?
Trying to find a simpler process for people to combine lots without having to go through a higher surveyor to resurvey lots. Uh, go through a subdivision process. Uh, what we do though, what I do want, if you're going to combine the lots. Then you have to follow subdivision ordinance, just put it back. So, to me, other than that, it should be a simple, comes to the city manager, he reviews it to make sure it meets requirements. And if we approve, I don't think it needs to be a public area, I don't think it needs to go for a planning zoning commission. Um, if anything, it goes to person, city council.
Mostly goes to the council in case you say no and they wanna be heard. That's really where I would see that would come up.
I just wish this was six months ago that we did this.
And in fact, this is what we, I was looking at, you brought this up. In other towns, we've done this on an ad hoc basis, we just present in here, there's gonna be a merge, everybody vote on it. And then there's no real framework for any other person who could do it, so this, uh, this makes it really nice, everybody knows what they can do. Yeah, I mean, the only time I can see you reject it is if anyone to merge five lots and it was gonna screw up the, the zoning area. We're intended to use.
I think it's a good idea.
So does this bother, can join lots, so if you've got somebody in subdivision A, but is. He finds out his lot, his other lot, next, right next to his house is in a.
Different subdivision?
Different subdivision, this'll combine them, still no problem.
It, it ties them together because of the way the, the recording is, cuz it does have to be a recorded document, it ties the abstracts together. And that way you can't split them off without.
The abstracts are gonna show lots, so and so from this subdivision, lots on, they're not changing the description of the property. We're just changing, tying them together for use.
Everybody's okay with this?
Yeah, I just wish it was sooner.
This happens about three times in two years. We just have a one of them, right, and we won't see it again for three years.
All right, so you've been given direction on that one then, correct? All right, next, uh, we need to talk about in November, uh, Will Beckon's day, is there November?
Eleven, that would be your first council meeting in, in November. Uh, it's a holiday, so we'd like to move that to November twelfth.
I would love that.
Uh, if, if that's the case, I'd like a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Joe.
Yes.
Brian. Yes, Mary Ann.
Yes.
Ben. Jim, nuisance property updates.
We only have one pending matter right now that we're working on, um. Everything else has been resolved to some degree or another, except, uh, we have, uh. One property, I, I have to ask Tim, we need, uh, there's a Gerald Guthrie property on Lincoln Street. We had it, we had a citation, we got a judgment a year ago to clean it up, it's been a new complaint, so it's been refiled. There is, uh, Tim and I talked, we need to, I think there are a number of properties that we need, that have not been referred to us. That are probably in line to be, so we're gonna try and get together with Kim Heims and do that, but that's all we have in front of us right now.
I, I know we have some houses that are, have changed hands, and the property owners are looking to tear them down. Maybe those conversations have been had with our building official, but that has not necessarily reached everybody else. Uh, cuz I think that might be some of the complaints we're receiving too.
Is, is it possible that we have? Somebody that buys a house that plans on tearing it down, is it possible to get, like, we have a building code, our permit sticker you put in the window? Can we find a color of paper that we could, it'd be basically a building permit, but on it, it says destruction, and we tag it. And then when somebody calls, hey, this house looks crappy, yeah, but does it have this color tag in it? Yeah, it's getting tore down.
Or you have a demolition permit that can be issued, and so that's what we'd be, we can post and have that, you know, there's permits for good for a year. And so we can have it posted tagged.
Unfortunately, they don't always display them.
Yeah, but that's something, that's kind of what I'm talking about, is I think we need to get some of those things identified as they are coming down, the property owner is addressing that. Uh, demolition, uh, we don't allow them to tear the house down until all utilities are disconnected, and so that's a verification. That the, the gas lines are disconnected, uh, from wherever it needs to be, the meter's definitely, electrical's pulled out of it. The city's water is disconnected from it before they start keeping it to it, so there is a process, we don't necessarily allow them just to have a permit. Tear it down until we know, these things have occurred, because we've had it where they've torn houses down, where these things have not occurred, it's caused more problems. You have power lines laying underground, you have the center sewer that, uh, is open, uh, or they've pulled the water. Service line out of the main, does equipment grab it, hold it.
I have a question about Carl's food store, that's gonna be kind of me. Anything we can do about that?
Absolutely, I'll send a notice.
Okay. Thank you.
Do we, uh, the fire, Manchester Fire Department still burn houses down?
Uh, they don't as often. The, the rules have changed so much because you have to go through if you're going to do a control burn of a structure. Yeah, still have to do your asbestos abatement, uh, and then the asphalt shavings have to come out.
And you have to get a permit from the. So that's kind of.
Kind of thinking with all, I mean, I don't know how many houses are getting tore down from who we've got.
They do some practices, I mean, they know that they can go into the structure, cut holes in the wall and stuff like that. Uh, they might set up a smoke box so they can practice going in, entry, clear the smoke out of it, but they just can't do the burning.
They will sometimes climb on the roof and cut holes in the roof, depending at being safe. So we've seen homes that aren't safe, and they're just not even safe to play in.
Makes you have that nice little thing out there at the city shop. Any more questions for Jim? All right, thank you, uh, Jason.
Got the update on Commerce Court, it's really the only active construction project we have going on. Um, I have been working with Perry and Tim, Mandy mentioned that there's some hazardous mitigation money available. Working at, uh, putting together some estimates and doing a notice of interest regarding generators for some of the lift stations in town. Uh, specifically, uh, Turkey Timber Industrial Park Hotel, um, you know, some initial pronary numbers on the equipment, you know. And electrical installation are probably looking at fifty to sixty thousand dollars a site, depending on the size of generators needed. Um, we're priority two based on the criteria that was sent out to us. Um, and they're saying typically it's a seventy-five, twenty-five, meaning seventy-five federal, twenty-five local. Of which, that's sometimes ten percent state, and then ultimately a fifteen percent will be matched, so. Depending on how things go, there, you'd be looking, you know, less than ten thousand dollars generator potentially, if we can, they are able to secure. Care funds for those, but working with Tim, going through the process, there's a specific website and a username, you have to go through the MG grams to get the most interest on there. Working on getting through that here this week, but just to let councilmen know, we're kind of working on that, what, what's that? Thank you. Is there anything else?
We are waiting in agreement with you for the trail.
Yeah, that's right, the trail, next meeting, we've been busy trying to wrap up some projects, but regarding the trail up by, uh, Rand Avenue. The federal aid project for next year, so you'll have that for your next meeting.
And that'll go in next summer.
Next summer, that would be next construction, so that'll be a DOT lighting process, so we'll follow their rules.
Yeah, so that's the reason we need.
All right, all right, thanks, Jason. Sam?
Yeah, uh, East Main, just one thing I didn't mention for, I talked a little bit with Tim and Perry too, um. Inlet protection devices that's out there, we'll just have city staff yank those this fall, um, so I'll have the contractor come back and do that stuff. Um, and then, just kinda general items, um, making a little bit with Tim, we're working on just preliminary, looking at estimated cost for Anderson Street, and then some downtown projects for the city's capital improvement plan. And then, uh, also the water system, so, so we'll be getting estimates and stuff to city staff here in the upcoming weeks, so.
Any questions, Sam? Nope.
Thanks.
All right, thank you. Uh, next, Jim, anything else?
The only update I would have is this continuing battle over the bond we need for the judgment wings. Um, I've spoken with the underwriters from E M C twice. They seem somewhat baffled by what to do. I didn't know this was so unique, but apparently it is. Um, I haven't heard anything for about ten days, so honestly, Aaron's gonna see this, I just sent John Dolan a. An email, ask him if he could follow us too, cause I haven't heard back, maybe he could keep it moving by contacting them.
Okay.
Um, but I had nothing beyond that. Nice conversation with the underwriter, just, uh. It was probably a half hour, just helping him understand why all the other bonds they do don't work.
Okay.
It's just, they have so many that they do, they, it's hard to understand why this one wouldn't.
Right.
But, according to the law, they don't, so we're trying to get a new one, so we're still there. The brief's on file with the Supreme Court, we're probably a year away from a decision, so.
Okay. Okay. Anything else, Ben?
So I am.
Okay. Tim?
I did speak with Mickey Shields, yeah, like I said, regarding goal setting session, December second, that week will not work for him. He's got two budget workshops, the week of the sixteenth, that would be the third Monday. Um, either December sixteenth or December eighteenth, which would be a Wednesday, those two dates do work for him.
Hey, I cannot do the eighteenth.
You can't. The sixteenth work.
I prefer to stay on Mondays with my work schedule now, I guess.
Okay, so we'll plan on December sixteen to five o'clock, uh, the location is yet to be determined. Uh, we will have department heads do their goal setting session first, uh, we'll do that in the afternoon, and then. They'll be dismissed, and then we will go into our own goal setting session with the council.
And then we will have their wishlist, or however you want to say it.
Uh, we will have what their priorities are.
Good.
But I understand again, a lot of their priorities are focused on their departments, what they need.
Right.
The council needs to identify their policies they wanna look for.
Anything else, Sam?
No, I don't have any. Oh. Knock your meeting tomorrow morning at seven thirty, at the committee room, uh, at the Paragon, if you can make it, that'd be wonderful.
Which one's that?
Uh, that's the main center.
Right where you first, the word.
Yeah, the tan.
Uh, Mrs. W., exactly. Duty Center.
Main Center.
She'll be in the small room off to the left.
Oh, so where we did that E C I.
Yeah. Anything else, Tim?
No.
Okay, Aaron?
Um, I think two forty-five Park Drive has been taken care of and is sold now. Nine oh one West Main has a different attorney. And still trying to work through the loops with them to to get that satisfied, and then I will be out of the office. Wednesday and Thursday at the Iowa Municipal Finance Officers Conference in Des Moines.
I want to do the auditors, Tim.
The auditors come, uh, October twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, they'll be here.
So please, twenty eighth to twenty-ninth, low noise, calm music. Aaron and I will be at each other, so just kind of, no fast quick movements.
It'll be fine, it's just a lot of getting papers out of there.
Yeah.
Getting back away, yeah.
Yeah, two forty-five Park Drive is taken.
All right. Brian?
Nothing.
Linda?
Um, I would like a tour of some of these park changes, I wanna do like Seabrook Park, I'd like to actually see what the plans are, and just I think we're like. I haven't been in there for a long time.
Seabrook Hall, you haven't been in?
No, I've only kind of, just kinda like to see what.
Or we'll wait and try to show you what's going on.
Yeah, I would like to do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, Seabrook Hall, we've had family functions there and stuff, it's definitely being used for something it was not intended for.
Exactly.
It would be nice to have something that was, and we don't have an indoor location to have gatherings that we can run out on the city side, so, other than Seabrook Park.
Right.
We've had it for lots of McMahon gatherings, and it's way too small.
I wasn't jumping on that, Mary Ann.
Too small. Again, yeah, okay.
Most families.
That's gonna make the party's considered, and they're just fine.
Uh, yeah, so I recently had talked to Nick Brunsmann, um, he lives outside of Dundee, and he was gathering pay. For livestock for the hurricane, um, people down south. So, um, they've sent, as far as I know, they got two loads already gone down, uh, so they're still looking for livestock, everybody. Brings up the the humans down there, um, just wanted to bring up that the livestock's still in that dune and stuff, so.
And the pets too.
Yeah, and they're getting ready to go down, and it's gonna be winter time, and it's gonna, so.
Okay. We talked to him, you guys' contact information?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, Bill?
Nothing.
Okay, I don't have anything either tonight, um, with that, I mean, the motion, if that, Joe. Well, Jim, Ryan, a second to adjourn, and we are adjourned, thank you everybody for joining us tonight.